I got my seventies porn stash.
Well, some, you know, you wear well.
That's as big as it gets.
I was thinking cop stash.
Yeah, yeah, no, I couldn't, I couldn't grow one. This is it.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir. Come on, good evening.
Good evening, sir.
I'd like to call the regular board meeting Monday, February twelfth, twenty twenty four to order. Please rise for the invocation from Captain Chip Wood.
I'd like to have a moment of silence for six firefighters who lost their lives this past month. Dear God, we come today and we give honor to those that have served so faithfully and have made the ultimate sacrifice for the service of others. Pray he'll be at their families, Lord, give them comfort and strength. As always, we pray for protection over our firefighters here in Benita and the surrounding areas, keep them safe from harm. Thank you for their service and what they do and their, just their devotion to helping others. And Lord, we thank you for our country, we thank you for the guidance you give us and pray we may always look to you. It's in Christ's name we pray.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just for the record, Commissioner Slackter called, he's running late because of traffic. So, he'll be, he should be here soon. Any public comment on agenda items? Seeing none, I need a motion to approve the January eighth, twenty twenty four regular meeting minutes.
So moved.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I need a motion for the twenty, January twenty twenty four current, current expenditures and ACH payments, the acknowledgement of financial reports and the acknowledgement of wire transfers and transfers between accounts.
So moved.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Commissioners, business. Hey, what you got, anything you want to talk about?
I'd just like to say something if I may.
Yes.
Briefly.
Good time.
My, my daughter had her school get, had a tour, we already talked about this. And everyone that was involved was it, with it was fantastic and I was really proud. And that's a, that's a day, uh, the chief was here, Chief Schmidt, that's a day that those children are going to remember for the rest of their lives. Uh, everybody made them feel special, it was informative, they were patient, they were fantastic. I'm not a big kid fan, but your people were great, so, uh, thank you, everybody that was involved, I was really impressed, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. I, I did get your email and I forwarded to, uh, the HR director and she's going to, uh, put it in each person's file that was named.
They were really fantastic.
And we don't acknowledge that enough, because it goes on.
All the time.
All the time, and we, we just don't, I think we just take everything that everybody here does totally for granted. We expect it, you guys, every, you guys and gals are so good at what you do, we just expect it and, but every once in a while, it's nice to get an atta boy.
Yeah, yeah.
So thank you. You're very welcome.
Anybody else?
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to the disposals, uh, need a motion for, to approve the disposal report?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Old business. You know what I'm going to say.
No, and, and we have been in contact with TECO, uh, with that, and, uh, and we've also talked with the FFCA and with, um, it's called Florida, the Florida Association of Hazmat Responders. So they're all taking that up, you know, uh, TECO has made the comment that they bought a lot of underground pipes and they're still trying to work it out. Uh, but short of that, you know, they know they have a problem with it, we're just going to continue to, to, uh, you know, watch our own backside while we're out there and keep pushing on the state level about getting some type of, uh, mapping or GIS system like BSU has for their hydrants. And I'm, I'm, I would venture a guess that FPNL does the same thing along with, uh, Lee County Co-op in the Cape. So, you know, I think that it's time that they have it, uh, done also, so we're going to keep pushing.
This has been, this has been at least six months, maybe eight months.
As you know, sir, you know, the wheels in Tallahassee sometime turn slow.
Well, and, and it shouldn't even make it that far, this should be something that TECO.
It should be to do the right thing, but.
I mean.
So maybe we can apply some pressure, this is a safety issue for these guys and gals that are on, on the street.
And it's not like people haven't got killed already, there was that accident in, in Fort Myers about ten years ago where they got blown up and they told them the gas line was on this side of the street and, and it was on the other side.
Yeah.
And they were digging and hit it and it wasn't even supposed to be there and a guy's still, he's permanently disabled here in Benita.
We want to work with them, but this is ridiculous.
Is there anybody else you think putting pressure on them, other than, I mean, can we?
I don't, I can't, I don't know. No, I, I mean, other than the fire service, I mean, maybe some contractors out there or the one eight hundred dig may be doing it because they're the ones going out and locating it, uh, but we can go down that road and I can talk to one eight hundred dig or.
Did we find the top, the top person to speak with?
Uh, I spoke to one of the regional directors.
He was over on the east coast though, right?
No, this was the one up, out of Tampa.
Oh, okay.
So, I went up to a safe and, safe health, health and safety, uh, meeting and that's where the, like, one of the regional directors out of Tampa was at and I told her and then she's the one that told me that, that basically they bought a lot of pipe, they bought a lot of stuff and they don't know and people that don't do the U, the one eight hundred dig or whatever and they'll think that the pipe's supposed to be right here and as Commissioner, as Chairman Lohan said, it's over here or it's just got a sidewalk over the top of where the pipe's at.
It's like saying we don't know where a landmine is.
Yeah.
We, uh, Chairman, do you think we should get involved as a board?
Uh, a hundred percent, I think, I think we need to get local, other local departments to get involved because it's like that one that happened just, you know, just to the west of here.
Yeah.
I mean, they didn't even know where the shut off was.
It was on for a couple of weeks.
They, they, they ended up having to crimp the line, not even, we don't know where it is, I mean, come on, man, you know, it's, it's gas, people are going to get killed here, you know?
The gas line, we, we had a fire in Benita, uh, off Imperial, uh, was that a TECO line? It was a TECO line.
They're all TECO lines.
They're all TECO lines.
Alright, so if, if it's gas in Benita, it's TECO.
Yeah.
Okay, was that an issue with, at that, uh, call?
I'm sure it was, I mean, it just took them a while to find the, the shut off and, and or sometimes they won't shut it off, they'll crimp it low enough where they feel it's safe to do a hot splice, uh, because again, when they shut it off, everybody downstream, they've got to go and relight all those pilot lights and advise them, so it's.
But in the meantime, I, our guys are out there sitting, they're being exposed to, to.
And, and local residents driving by, I mean, you know, what, what, I mean, I, I witnessed one when I was very young and I couldn't believe it.
We would back up, create the perimeter, you know, we're not going to put ourselves in harm's way unless we have to, unless it's life safety. You know, whole risk management, we're not going to put anybody in harm's way.
Okay.
Unless we have to.
Well, I for one am tired of hearing that, well, we bought other, you know, we brought other companies and we don't know where they are, go find them. That, that's, you know, it's your responsibility, right? I don't, I'm starting, my Irish temper's starting to.
I'll get a letter drafted, uh, on behalf of the, uh, on behalf of the board of directors and, uh.
Who does that for the state? The state has to oversee some of this stuff for utilities.
You would think.
Right?
You would think so.
I mean, I, I don't know who does that, but I think maybe now that might be the next step to find a department that's already in charge of this and, and start putting the pressure on.
Well, Wednesday, I will be with the State Fire Marshal.
I know, you spend a lot of time with Jimmy.
Joanne Rice and I will have a conversation with her or her deputy on, on that.
Thank you.
Anybody else got anything they want to rant about? Sorry, but it's kind of been bugging me for a long time.
Yeah, thanks for bringing it up.
Okay, new business, uh, fixed asset policy. I think I'm going to have Greg just do a brief for the public.
So basically, the state of Florida says that, uh, through the government financing, says that you must label all your stuff that has value, that has more of value, you, you name the price up to five thousand dollars is what the state says. So you can go anywhere from a dollar to five thousand dollars, they want it labeled, they want it tracked that way and it's an asset. And if it lasts more than five thousand dollars, in our case, we're going to go to twenty five hundred. If it's more than twenty five hundred dollars and has a life expectancy of greater than one year, we need it tracked for auditing purposes. In the past, it's been seven hundred and fifty, we thought that was low back in the day when things didn't cost as much. You know, seven, seven hundred and fifty was a lot of money, it's still a lot of money now, but doesn't need to be tracked. And when we say tracked.
What do we have, over three thousand items?
Three thousand items at the fire department right now that are under seven hundred and fifty and that's either from computers to cell phones to desks, to these tables, to different things. So we felt it, um, what was that? Yeah, we're still going to track them, obviously, if we walk in here tomorrow and these desks are gone, we're going to tell somebody that the desks are gone. We don't need an auditor to do it, but to help with, uh, the man hours, we're going to raise the capital expense up to twenty five hundred, uh, which will help us in the end. The other thing that we have changed in this policy is, in the past, we've had fire apparatus, you know, go from fifteen to twenty years. We've lowered that, or from fifteen to twenty five years, we've lowered it for a twelve year life expectancy on the line and then three to four years, up to twenty years as a reserve engine or a school truck. And we did the same thing with staff vehicles, so we lowered those a little bit. Other than that, the policy remains the same as written back in two thousand fourteen. The only caveat, because of the audit, we would like to have this retro, retroactive, back to December, or October one of twenty twenty three. That's the only, those are the changes, that way we can do it for this fiscal year that we're in right now, make those changes.
Thank you, you need a motion for that?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Any further discussion on it? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The type, the, the dollar amount, the cap is twenty five hundred, what, what's the timeframe?
Timeframe is more than one year, if that, if that asset is, has a life expectancy of more than one year.
Thank you.
And who decides what's worth what?
Uh, it's based on purchase price and to include shipping, so let's use bunker gear.
So replacement, replacement cost?
Replacement cost or the actual purchase cost, yeah.
The replacement cost today?
Yeah, when we buy it, when you get the invoice. So let's say right now, we go out and buy ten new desktops for administrative staff. With shipping, the monitor, all its components, it's eight hundred and ninety five dollars. So it would not meet that threshold of twenty five hundred, currently it does. And if you took any one item, this is where the finance director and myself have, have discussions like the computer can, the CPU can stand alone, it's only five hundred dollars, the monitor's two hundred dollars and the keyboard's fifty bucks.
This is more housekeeping than anything, right?
Yeah, it is, and, and it will, it will have a, a minor effect on a depreciation of office equipment and, uh, vehicles. But nothing major. But to answer your question, Commissioner, it's based on the purchase price when we do it. And again, based on general law and general ledger, it will tell you what the life expectancy is on certain items or we can make that determination, let's use the monitors which you just disposed of and we put in service today. Those monitors had a life expectancy through the manufacturer of about five to seven years, we had them for over ten.
Okay.
So it's based on some of those things also.
Okay, you're still up, your chief report.
Okay. Just a few items, uh, some housekeeping, some, just some informational. Business after hours this month through the chamber is at Lake Michigan Credit Union, which is just south of Coconut Road on the west side. It is February twenty second, uh, from four to six as, as always. If anybody would like to go, please let Anna Marie know as soon as possible. Um, and also for information purposes, we had a CD come due, uh, this last month. Finance director and myself looked at all the rates, you know, so we decided to just renew it with the same company that we had, which was Bank United? Bank United, which had the best rate of five point three percent for a three month. If we went any further than that, it was a little bit lower, so we just did another three month renewal of that two million dollars, so. So we're always looking at that on a, on a monthly basis. I did get a phone call on Friday that an offer is forthcoming on the restaurant, I don't know what it is yet, they haven't, uh, divulged that, they were looking at it to let, to, you know, kind of do their due diligence before they come and talk to myself about it. So, you know, uh, as soon as I get that offer and see what they were wanting to do, I will pass that on to the board. I'll probably call each one of you individually and then we will, you know, obviously bring it before the board for a, uh, for a vote when we decide what it is, if it, if it is amenable. Uh, the other thing that is happening right now, just so everybody's aware, the district has received a hundred percent reimbursement for Hurricane Adalia that we sent people up to, you know, they, the state obviously did something right, uh, for a change. You know, in the past, it's taken us a long time, so the state in this year, this fiscal year, uh, implemented a new process on how to get reimbursed, it's called FROC, so I forget exactly what it stands for, but it's FROC. So if you want reimbursed, you have to take these classes, you have to submit your two fourteens on this special website and this, uh, new way of, of implementing it all. Uh, if you do the classes and you do it on these forums, you get twenty percent right away and then the rest of the eighty percent comes quicker for you because it's on their forums, it's uploaded. So we've gotten a hundred percent reimbursements from Adalia when we sent the crews up to the Big Bend area, uh, to assist with that when neighborhood of, uh, just over seventy thousand dollars we got reimbursed already this year. And that's at a hundred percent, it's done. For Hurricane Ian, we've got the debris removal re, reimbursed, uh, for Station Twenty Seven. We're waiting on the remodeling information to have that done and then Cat B is still being reviewed, Cat B is the timed, which is the bigger, the bigger expenses, which is three hundred and ten thousand dollars, five hundred thousand dollars. So, um, so that's where we're at on reimbursement from the state for the last two hurricanes. Uh, on a positive note, uh, Paul Canning will be retiring at the end of March, March thirty first will be his last day. And, and we had had an opening from a firefighter who decided to relocate to North Carolina, Josh Simon. So today I offered two gentlemen, uh, can, uh, job offers, you know, contingent on them passing a physical background check and so on. So they've been offered those jobs, they're going for their physicals on February twenty second. Uh, pending those outcomes and everything goes right, uh, they will either start in their three week orientation either on March the eleventh or March the eighteenth, we're still working that out with the training division. So that, with those two hires, you know, three weeks later, they'll be on, you know, no later than May first, they'll be on the line. That will bring us up to full staffing of thirty two per day, so we'll be at full staffing, which is the first time in a long time that we've been at full staffing just by attrition and or people quitting or whatever, relocating. Uh, the next thing that we've done, uh, as you recalled, uh, Jessica Saruchar retired from the prevention staff. She wanted to be a stay at home mother and do her thing, so she's retired. So today I offered, uh, Ashley Diaz, one of the administrative assistants, who over the last year has went and got her fire inspector certificate. So I've offered her a job, uh, to go and she will start next Monday at the next pay period. So she'll be in a fire inspector, uh, I've given her a month just to kind of take a look at it, make sure she likes it, make sure she wants to do this because she's never done anything like this, so she will be over there for a month, she'll let myself and Fire Marshal Shoals know if this is what she wants and at that time we will, uh, obviously, I advertise for a replacement of some sort for her. And then lastly, that I have is Senate Bill Ten Fifty Eight and House Bill Seventy Thirty One, which is the, um, bill on special districts where they're giving us certain more requirements to do as a special district, so, uh, it is being heard on the fourteenth at nine AM. Um, I'm going to make every attempt to be up there for that, I'm probably going to leave tomorrow sometime to be up there for, to speak, uh, speak on that bill. They've made significant changes, uh, the major change that they made was that we would have to be reauthorized every ten years, which would have been detrimental to any special district, not, let alone fire department.
Reauthorized, meaning that it had to go in front of voters to decide if we could still be at any special district every ten years, so.
So that got taken out, the other things that we, that are on there, we can live with, we still don't like, uh, and we're still trying to fight it, but it, in my humble opinion, it looks like it's pretty much a done deal. It's already passed the House, been on the floor, three readings on the House, so it's already passed that. Now they're just going to make sure that they're both the same, so there is a little glimpse of hope that they may not be the same and when we were talking to the House sponsor about this, about making the changes that we wanted to make, she was, eh, I'm not sure we can make those changes, well, the Senate has made those changes for us, so. My hope is that they don't get along and they don't match and it just dies right there, but.
They have, they both have to match.
They have to match exactly, word for word. Um, the positive is, is that time is on our side, you know, this will all be done by March sixth is the end of the, uh, is the end of the session and with that being said, they're going to take the next two weeks, I think, to argue and, and do horse trading, as you would call it, on the budget itself, which is the major.
Their agenda for that hearing, that committee meeting has got, I can't even count the number of items on it.
I, at last count, the, uh, for the meeting is scheduled from nine until one.
They got over fifty of them now.
They've got over fifty bills that they need to hear that day and argue about and discuss.
And people testify, so I don't even know how they're going to manage to, unless they, unless they fix it, they just get a rubber stamp and all move them through.
So, so we'll see, and on this, on that committee, the Rules Committee, I believe there are about fourteen members, where typically there are about seven, so they've got double the members and double the opinions, so. The only thing I can think of is it is Valentine's Day and some of them may be home, so.
They're looking for a reason not to be, that's what worries me.
And with that, I will be, like I said, I will be up there representing the fire department, uh, at a, at an inaugural, um, gala put on by the State Fire Marshal, uh, Joanne Rice, she's asked us to be up there. And so, uh, I will be up there for that, uh, on Wednesday and Thursday. I stand by for any questions.
Anybody want, you got any questions on that?
I'm just wondering, the, the new hires, where do we get them, where do?
So what we typically do is about, it's been on average, let's put that, about every two years, we do a hiring pool. So we advertise through social media, Indeed, newspaper, all, all, all areas. So we take applications for about a month, month and a half, we vet those applications, then we typically give a written test that we rent from an outside source, like a, just like a public servant exam, uh, we have the candidates pay for that. So once they take that test, we have them, uh, we grade it and we usually invite back anybody who got a seventy or above to do a physical agility test out here, like the following Saturday or two Saturdays later, do a physical agility that is timed, doing firefighter stuff, it takes them about ten to twelve minutes. Then if they pass that, then we'll look at the top, let's say that anybody who scored an eighty or above, we'll call them back in to do an oral interview with either firefighters, lieutenants and or battalion chiefs and of those, they'll rank them and that's who will get interviewed for me. So with these two gentlemen that, that I offered, they were the last ones on our list. Everybody else, either A, scored lower than seventy, or B, a couple of them have jobs elsewhere, they didn't wait on us long enough. And one of them, we are, we may be getting from somebody else, so.
But that's really what I was asking, yeah.
So we're one and one.
Okay, thank you.
And one of them is a local kid here that grew up and went through the system here in town.
That's nice.
Chief, it reminds me of the time I was in the Air Force and the Marines are running around, they're out there running now.
Yeah, the same thing, so we have, uh, we have guys coming off duty, we, we stand out there in Procter and it's basically the physical agility is, you know, running hose up the tower, down the tower, carrying something around the tower, uh, pulling a hose, hitting the target, putting a ladder up, you know, basic firefighter skills and they do, they come here and, uh, they're in gloves and a helmet.
Okay.
Anybody else, good questions?
Yeah, what's, is there anything new on the, uh, Fort Myers?
No, the, uh, for the merger you're speaking of, sir?
Yes, sir.
So the merger itself is, for all practical purposes for us, for Benita Springs is done. Uh, at the local delegation, Iona McGregor and Fort Myers Beach have agreed to enter into a, an agreement to pick a company to do a study to see if it is fiscally and feasibly responsible for those two to merge. Uh, at our last trip to Tallahassee, we did speak to, uh, Representative Botana. Uh, he's still on board with them doing that, but he wants it done sooner than later, uh, you know, there is still talk.
It's coming back at some point.
It, there are still talks of other districts merging, maybe the smaller ones to the north. Uh, and or, like I said, Representative Botana still feels that, he feels that even some of the bigger ones, us, let's say us, San Carlos and Astero should look at some type of merger.
Chief, do you agree with that?
Uh, not right now, I do not agree with it, uh, I think that we operate as efficient or more efficient than a bigger entity.
I agree with that too.
You know, when you start looking at it, we don't, if, if we were Lee County versus Benita Springs, they don't get any better by any power than us. The state has helped us immensely with that, with, with state contract for rental cars, for chairs, for paper, for, for fuel sometimes, for vehicles, for fire trucks, you know, so it's, it's not like because Lee County EMS buys a hundred t-shirts, they get any cheaper than we do. So, so it's like that and the way I feel about it is that we're just big enough now that where we can have total control over our personnel and have total supervision over our personnel, you know, and, and that's it, you know?
That's good, that's really good.
Right now, you know, let's use Lee County EMS, you know, they have one DO for, I think, seven different stations. And if, if you see a DO down here, it's very rare, where we have our training captains, we have a lieutenant on every single vehicle, we have an officer at every single station, you know, just, it gives better peace of mind and I feel that it gives us, uh, more accountability of our personnel.
Thank you so much.
The one question that I always say is, when's the last time you saw smaller government agencies become bigger government agencies and be more efficient?
Yeah.
And I don't, I think the answer to that is never.
Well, and, and it's that and, and I'll just tout special, special districts, you know, between us, San Carlos, Astero, all the special districts in Lee County, because we have monthly meetings and, you know, when this started, when this started rearing its head, you know, back in October, you know, we had a special meeting at the Five Bugles and I can tell you right now that no district, no district in Lee County has more than three people in the audience at any given monthly meeting because we're very efficient, we're responsible, we're fiduciary, we're fiduciarily responsible, we, we do the right thing. Now again, if we were out, you know, being cowboys and, and doing the wrong thing, this, this meeting room would be full every month with people complaining about our service, complaining about their taxes, complaining about whatever we were doing wrong. But I think that lends to it, that every year when we do the budget, we have minimal people here, one to two. And most of the time, it's, you guys are doing a great job, thank you for keeping our taxes low. And as, as you put it, uh.
I agree with that, do you?
And as you put it.
Absolutely.
Uh, Commissioner Matero, you know, we, we get letters every month that says, hey, we're doing a great job, hey, thank you for showing up, hey, you made a difference in my kid's life.
I was on the board when we did that consolidation, uh, study when, uh, I think that was twenty ten?
Yeah.
And, um, there was a push at the time to merge San Carlos, Astero and Benita and we did a forum, a big meeting at the, um, Astero High School. I'd say there were probably about a thousand people came to it and all three commissions, there were fifteen of us. And, um, Terry Everly, who was the editor of the news press at the time, he emceed it and asked the questions and, and when it was all said and done, all the public input was, we don't want to do it and the vote for the three fire districts was fourteen against and one for. And you can guess who the one was for, you, you know, so, um, at the end of the day, it's already, there, there was, even then, and it made, it, it made more sense then than it does now. Okay, that's back when we were going, we'd just come off of two thousand eight, every, the property values had dropped, you know, people were laying, we were getting early retiring people, it, it makes totally no sense now. I mean, we got through, we got through probably the worst financial crisis of my lifetime, especially being in business and if, if we were going to do something like that, and even then there wasn't, there, there just nobody wanted to do it. I mean, it was like nobody, I mean, it wasn't like there were people beating the drums that, hey, yeah, what are you guys doing? There was no, there was no reason, there was a reason to do it then, nobody wanted, there's no reason to do it now.
No, and, and again, you know, one of Representative Botana's, I guess, talking points is it's going to put more people out on the road. Well, right now, I feel and Astero feels and so does San Carlos, that we're all adequately staffed. We're not, we're not running a burnout, we're not burning out our, our firefighters, you know, and we just, um, the study is done and it will be a next month, at next month's board meeting, our standard of coverage, the one from Fitch and Associates, it is done, so the IFF.
You're in the top three percent of departments in the country, that the last one we had.
Yeah, and we're still there and the IFF has a, has a, um, a standard, a burnout standard. If you're running more than thirty percent of your day on calls or outrunning calls thirty percent of your day, you need to look at either adding a station or adding a unit. We're at less than ten percent, so we're well below what the IFF and what, uh, the IFC says that we're, you're, you're going to have a burnout rate. So, you know, we're well below that, so if we were, you know, if we were above that, we'd be looking to add staff, we'd be looking to do that. So to me, that takes a little bit of Representative Botana's, you know, window to say.
Between the chief and I, when we were in Tallahassee, uh, we invited every one of the local delegation to do a ride along for a day at any department that they're talking about merging. And we invited them, every single one of them, because until you ride a day, you don't know what goes on. You, you can think you know, but you don't and as of right now, and even back when Ray Rodriguez was Senator, he was, he was a thorn in all of our sides for a good while. And as of right now, and even back when Ray Rodriguez was Senator, he was, he was a thorn in all of our sides for a good while. And I had.
He was?
Yeah, and I had, I, I finally said to him one day, I'll ride with you, come on, come for a day. Oh, yeah, that'd be a great idea. And you were with me another time when I said to him, come on, Senator, we're gonna go do this. Yeah, yeah, he never did. Okay, so don't confuse me with the facts is kind of like, you know, what we're dealing with, and it's frustrating. When we're up there talking to these people, and obviously, we have everybody from every department's interest at heart, but a hundred percent, we have this department as, as first and foremost, and, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna go down swinging. But, uh, and I think we've got a lot of support locally, you know, from the residents and the taxpayers. And I guess all I can say is if they want to keep it up, bring it on, because it's not the right thing to do. And I'm on record as saying it, so.
Chairman, up in Tallahassee, who, who would you consider our best friend?
That's a hard question, because there's a lot of bobbleheads, shake your hand, as Greg knows. And you walk out, and you kind of feel like they go like that when you walk out the door, so. I, I, I can't answer that honestly. Um, Greg's probably got, has made, because of the boots on the ground, Greg has probably made more friends as far as, you know, people that he, they'll tell him stuff that, you know, they won't tell me, or, and vice versa.
Yeah.
But, um, I, I, I don't hon- honestly, no.
I, I think we have a lot of acquaintances up there, friends, you know.
We, we have, we have friends that, that will, um, we have friends that, you know, when we're up there, we'll go have a drink with, and we'll all sit around and talk, but if somebody on a committee up there decides that they need a favor from somebody on that committee, and they're making, they're horse trading, they forget about, they forget about everybody they made promises to because now they're trying to, well, if I got ever gonna get this deal done, then I've gotta go with your deal. And we've seen over the years so much proof of that, that it's just frustrating, you know, and I get it. I, I, I guess if you're going to survive, but I guess, you know, I've never been that guy.
Being a previous councilman, I understand that. Greg, can you answer that question?
Yeah, I know, like I said, like, uh, Chairman Lohan said, we've got plenty of friends up there. It, it just, it depends on what's going on and where it's getting pushed from. So we'll use this bill, this Ten Fifty-Eight bill, which is the special district bill. It's getting pushed through leadership. The Speaker of the House has a, um, from what we understand, what I understand, has a bone to pick with mosquito control. Instead of just picking on mosquito control, he's taking all special districts and lumping them into, as one, because it's, he's painting this with a broad brush. So with that being said, you know, Jenna Person's Melika, who is a local representative, she is very friendly to us, she gives us heads up, she's, hey, this bill's coming down, this is what's going on with it. You need to give me some talking points so I can get, speak against this bill, what's bad with it. But at the end of the day, she's doing the bidding for Speaker Renner. So, so that's what I mean. They'll help us in certain ways, same thing with Representative Botana, Representative Roach, Representative G. Lombardi, uh, who else, Esposito, Representative Espe- Esposito, who used to be with the Chamber, who is with the Chamber, who, you know, were great friends. I coached her two twin brothers in, in wrestling at Astero High School. So we have a great relationship, but it depends on who's pushing the bill and where they want to sit in leadership in the future.
The last day we were up there for the legislative day, Jenna got called into the governor's office. So, you know, when the governor calls you in, and, and you're kind of like very low on the totem pole at this point, and tells you this is what he wants you to do, what are you gonna do? You're gonna say, I don't think so. No, you're gonna do it, and that's how, I mean, that's just how it works.
There's one person who learned the hard way about, don't do it, and that would be Ray Rodriguez, who's now the chancellor of colleges. The governor basically said, I'm not gonna support your campaign, and supported Senator Martin.
And he's not there, he's not there anymore, so. I mean, he got a great job, but, but he's not there anymore, and that's how it's done up there. If you don't, if you don't, if you don't dance, then, so, you're done. So that, I guess if that answers.
But at the end of the day, uh, until I'm out of here, I will be still going to Tallahassee and keep trying. It's all we can do.
Ditto.
Show our face.
That's it?
Show our face, tell them what we like, tell them what we don't like. And, uh, there have been years when things didn't go, there were nothing going against us, so we'd go up there and support their bills that were, that were important to them, so.
And we got some things moved. I mean, we did get this bill. This bill was far from where it is now. I mean, as, like, everybody is finally is compromised, and I guess we have to live with it, we can live with it, but it's just, uh, a lot of redundancy and a lot of unnecessary. It adds a lot more money and time and, and hours of labor to it, but the unfunded mandates are the thing that drive me crazy. They, they tell us we spent too much money, and then they keep sending more and more stuff that costs us money to do to prove that we're not spending too much money. It's, it's logic there somewhere, I haven't been able to find it. Anyway, let's not beat this to death, you have a.
It's a dilemma.
Uh, the rest of the reports are in there, you had a question?
I'm sorry for driving you crazy.
No, you're not driving me crazy.
I apologize.
Not at all.
I just, this was important to me. So everybody's aware, this is a question for Chief Broad, Chief Madden, Chief Schmidt. It's a two-part question. Everybody has called me just because of my relationship with the fire district. Hey, is, is Benita Springs, uh, prepared for such an event? And as we all know, the EPA just stopped the usage of our foam. So if we have a, a jet fuel, aviation fuel event, just say it comes on our, our side of I-75, we have this. Do our guys have what they need to put this kind of fire out? Because those guys had, had some problems with it.
We have, we have plenty of foam, we stock up, um, East Truck has its own foam. We also have agreements with the airport, and when there's alerts called for aircraft issues, you know, worst, worst case being a crash, uh, we do call for the airport, they do have crash trucks that will come down and provide more foam, just like you probably saw on the news that they had the big giant crash truck on seventy-five down there. They have the same type of protocols that we do. So yes, we do have the resources, we keep it at bay, we call in for more, we bring more foam if we needed it, other districts as well.
Okay, so you, we're, now, would you handle EMS? Would you start, go on scene and coordinate with EMS? Then I, I was told there was fifty-five or sixty emergency vehicles at that scene. I believe your son, was your son there?
Yeah, he, he went there, days there and, and afterwards. And yes, they had that, it was a unified command with, uh, Carri County Sheriff's, Carri County EMS, Greater Naples, and, uh, North Coler.
Okay, so we, we are good with that, and I would assume that at something at that, that large, you guys would be on scene as well, starting to call the shots.
The other thing that.
Where would Fort Myers be in, in this situation?
I'm sorry?
Where would Fort Myers Airport, uh, uh, crash, whatever?
The crash truck may be responding from RSW.
Okay.
The other thing that we would do, and again, protecting our guys, we've had lots of conversations with, uh, thirty-four, forty-four about this. So right now, the FAA has, or let's use RSW and Naples, Naples Airport, they're still using the old foam, the PIFAF foam because of the stockpile that they have, so we would make.
They were allowed to use it.
No, they are. Uh, we would make everybody fill out an exposure form, and I know that through my son at North Coler, they made all those guys fill out exposure forms just because of the foam.
Oh, so that's what they used on? Okay.
We do not, we do not have that.
We've got the new stuff.
We've got the new stuff, we had the new stuff since day one, since it came out.
Okay, great.
So, but again, we would keep track of our guys and do exposure forms, and again, going back to risk management and the safety side of it.
Okay, hey, thank you. You done?
Thank you, sir.
Sure, absolutely.
Alex Grandi, eleven-eight fifty-one, East Traffic Street in Benita Springs. Now, uh, what, I, I made a slight boo-boo. Uh, I said east, uh, I've got the Time Magazine from the, uh, accident in East Palestine.
Ohio?
Yeah, and, um, instead of, uh, uh, butyl acetate, which I wrote down, it's actually, uh, butyl acrylate, and I've got the right formula on here, finally. That's what I was doing out here, so, and I have this from, uh, what is it? The Reference Guide National Fire Rating System. And I, if you want this, you don't need that, but you got that. Oh, did I give you the, uh, yeah, I got, yeah, you got it. Okay, so that was one thing. Another thing is, uh, I'm a member of the Florida Antique Bucket Brigade, uh, and, uh, there's gonna be a, uh, a program in April, not of this year, but, uh, April in, I think, two thousand twenty-six at Fort Myers Fire Station Number One. Thank you.
Thank you. Chief, you had some, one more thing?
Yeah, I just wanted to remind everybody that we do have a pension meeting, uh, pension in Viva, both for the general and for the firefighters, and the Viva meeting is this coming, the twenty-first, next Wednesday. Next Wednesday, starting at eight hundred, zero eight hundred.
I'm sorry, what?
It's a pension Viva for the, it's a Viva meeting at zero eight hundred.
Zero eight hundred.
Then at nine o'clock is the general, and then, right, then, uh, just following that is the firefighter one.
On the twenty-first?
Twenty-first, Wednesday. You guys don't need to attend, I just wanted to keep you informed that it is that day.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
Thanks for coming.